And two, one each to under dollar.
So, um, it's possible for the board to work. You agree with that?
Yeah.
And you have the role there, right?
I do.
Okay.
All present.
Those are your, those are your minutes, right? I still want.
Yeah.
Are there any comments from the public? Oh, well, we got the minutes from the fifth.
There's the police commission minutes. They're the police committee minutes or joint meeting with them.
Oh, okay.
We need to review this.
Are we reviewing this, Karen?
If you could, if you want.
Well, yeah, okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, watch it. Any questions, corrections, or additions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. The board. Do we have any comments from the public either in the audience live or is there anybody out there? And one person out there, no hand raised. Okay, then we will move on to the consideration and possible action on an audit contract.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's hard to believe, but our contract with Mahoney Sable is up as of the end of this fiscal year. It will be the end of their contract. So I did reach out to them and asked them to give us the proposal which you have in front of us for a contract. They have been our auditor now for eight years. Originally, we contracted with them for four fiscal years, and then we did two extensions of two years each. So we're up to eight years. We, um, last year, we were talking with them about our relationship with them. And they told us at that point in time that they actually were reducing their number of clients that they had because the workload had become so large with a lot of new regulations, new auditing requirements and whatnot. So they were reducing small clients, but they were keeping larger clients like old Sabre. This year, when, when I reached out to them, you know, he very apologetically said, I'm sorry, but we have to increase our fees. Their scope of work is getting larger, in particular with ARPA and other grants and things like that that this whole world seems to be flush with. They have to audit all of those things. They've also told me that they had a really difficult time attracting and retaining staff. And, you know, those costs have gone up, trying to spread themselves a little bit more. Not as thin, but, you know, productively. They've invested in technology to do things like remote meetings and things like that. So we know how much that costs. So in a nutshell, they are raising their prices for all of their clients. I did kind of look online to see what the trends are for auditors. And it does, it does confirm that in fact, not only Mahoney Sable, but other firms are experiencing the same difficulty. So we did get a quote from them. The first year is going to be the steepest increase from like forty nine thousand to fifty eight thousand. After that, the increases are more moderate. So there's two recommendations for the Board of Finance to consider. One is to go out for three years. We're going to, we're going to take the bump up anyway. Pay for that one way or the other for them to contract at a reasonable increment of increases for the next couple of years. Or depending on the comfort level of the Board of Finance. If you wanted to look at another auditor, we could contract for one year and then go out and do an RFP at that point and, and, and get other, take a look at other proposals for auditing firms. I will say that I am very comfortable with Mahoney Sable. The staff is very comfortable with Mahoney Sable. I think they've done a really great job. And so there have been absolutely no issues with them as an auditor. And if you wanted to take that into consideration for your decision, I just thought I would add that at this point in time. And so looking for one of two motions to contract with them for three more years. And then most likely after that, you probably would definitely want to do an RFP. Or conversely, if you think you're ready to move faster, then contract for one more year and then take the time to do an RFP. So those are my comments.
If I can just comment, I'll bet that fifteen years ago, we were paying forty thousand dollars for audits. And it seemed to go up five hundred dollars a year, seven fifty, maybe a thousand. And here we are, fifteen years, I mean, honestly, I bet if we went back, look, you're looking at, you know, over the course of ten, fifteen years. Not a big increase over the, over and after a time, but a big increase for this one year. Previously, in the charter, you had to go out every seven years. I don't know, who remembers that? We did away with that because it was harder to attract auditors. There's been a lot of consolidation in the industry. So, uh, you know, these folks are good. I mean, obviously, we're going to do one more year. It's, we could certainly RFP it, but we're happy to do three too.
So. Do they audit our, our?
They do the single state, the single, the single audit or whatever it's called, single state audit, which is when you get grants over a certain amount, and I forget that exact amount. But we always have to file the, that single state, and that includes ARPA. Are you going to say something now? Okay, yeah, so they, and they get, so even if they didn't have to do that special audit, I think they would audit all of any monies that come into the town.
How extensive is that audit for, I mean, how far do they go with it?
Which audit is that?
For the year.
Well, we have to submit stuff to the state. We have to submit things to the Fed. We have these online portals which they also have access to. So they, they do a typical audit and then, but I'm not sure exactly if I'm answering your question, but for the single state, they have to do their audit and then they submit it to OPM. And then I have to certify that, that they had submitted it and a whole host of other things. But I'm not sure what you mean by how far.
No, I just didn't know, I mean, when they do the audit, they, they do the checks and the balances based upon the recommendations of ARPA.
Oh, right, yes. And, and I think I mentioned that too at the beginning of the audit season this year. I, they, the auditors every year kind of have a focus. One year was cash management. This year, it's been purchasing and, and grant management. So they are focused on that.
Yeah, they don't, they don't go through every account every year. They do pick things, they do random sampling.
They choose or, or you provide influence. They will choose where they, what segments they want to audit.
But they will also ask me and tomorrow on shortening, if we have an area that we want them to dig into too. And we have some time to time.
So you could miss two options. Is there a third option? And the third option would be to go out the bid now. I mean, this is for an audit that's going to be being done a year from now. So is it the possibility there? Because it seems to me, just from what you're describing as being Mahoney Sable, that one year, the biggest problem I have is the twenty percent jump between this year and next year. If we do one year, we're still going to get the twenty percent jump. And so my thought is, why wouldn't we go out to do it now? And see whether, you know, the number of good firms out there have, I'm sure these folks have been great to us and they know us very well. So why wouldn't we do that?
Well, I would say that most likely, and I, of course, I do not know the answer, but if we are seeing this trend for one firm, it's likely that we'll see it with others. But I don't know the answer to that for sure. Could be what you say. That's, um, so they start working with us in January, then they come in April, then they come in in July, then they come in and do work in October, November. Then they submit our reports in December, then they come back here in January. And so there would be a lot of work for us because RFPs take a long time. You know, you have to prepare them, submit them, give the firms time to compile their responses. I fear that we would be right on the heels of our next audit starting. And that wouldn't be fair to the auditor and it wouldn't be fair to the staff because they wouldn't have any time to get caught up either, either person and, or either entity. So that's my only concern with that option is that I feel, I fear we don't have enough time.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the Mahoney Sable, I heard you say it's a vote, contract for three years.
Is there any further discussion? Has to be second, second. I'm not.
I see and hear that this, these quotes are good for ninety days.
Yeah. Yes.
I know it's talking lack of, who's dropping on the facts this year because of just the added older regulations.
That way. It's a trend.
I'd be worried we might not be able to get back into them. We did separate and find out that they were much better and then we can't get back in because of their.
When, when do they need to know?
Well, Tom said that they have ninety days, but I would tell, I would tell them as soon as the, the decision is made. I mean, in fairness to that, but they don't think, they're giving us some new way in case they wanted to think about it, obviously.
Anybody else? Okay, there's a motion on the table. See, no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Or aye, opposed? Okay. The next item, consideration and possible action on elderly benefit for twenty twenty four. Yes.
So, uh, recommendation again is ninety thousand. This is something that has to be done and is included on the revenue side of the budget. It's a loss of revenue. We check with Norm every year. That's where the applications that Norm would, our assessor, every year, that's where the applications are fielded for this. And typically, uh, this is not grossly oversubscribed. In other words, we, we have people who apply for it, the ninety thousand dollars gets expended, but we haven't seen a trend any year that has gone significantly up. It is prorated when, uh, so, and it's based on a state formula. I, I want to say circuit breaker, but we've been using that term for twenty years. I don't know if it's still the same term. We did raise it a few years ago, uh, from seventy five to ninety. I am recommending we keep it where it is, ensure it again. Honestly, I don't hear from people all that much now. All across the state are different programs. You know, some towns do it a little bit more aggressively, some towns don't do it. This is what, you know, something that we've been doing for many, many years. So we're, this is a recommendation. We need it voted on by the Board of Finance so that we can include it in our budget and calculations.
So did, I understand you to say we use the whole ninety thousand dollars every year?
We do, actually, didn't. I think Norm said last year or the year before, it was not.
Like, it was just under nine, like seventy seven thousand one year, so.
I'm not saying there's not a need for it. I think there is, uh, there definitely is. I mean, you know, this, I think the number is a good number. That's all, that's what I would say. I think the number is still a good number. I'm not getting calls, you know, I get random calls, but I'm not having the door beat down from folks saying there needs to be a different program. I have had people say to me, uh, the town should suspend certain taxes on elderly properties and then reclaim it when the house is later sold, you know, maybe ten or fifteen years. That would be, that's an entirely different program. It'd be a significant loss of revenue to the town now. Not sure we're prepared to do that. That would probably involve a much, maybe a consultant to give this board a little bit more advice on that. This is a program that other towns do use and we've been using it for many years, so.
Does this one have to go to a town meeting also?
No, this is included in the budget when the budget gets voted on. So that is essentially your town meeting referendum.
Is elder building solely based on income?
It is based on income, yeah. It's not based on. Based on. An age, yeah. But you, you're, you're getting into perhaps, uh, real estate matters.
Well, one assets.
Or other assets, right? But it is based on income, yes.
I just have a question. Over the last several years, the cost of living has been pretty static. Each year, with the increase, dramatic increase in energy along with that, I would seem to think there would be a greater need for this benefit than in previous years. And I would kind of think that we should make it a little bit higher, like a hundred grand. You don't have to spend it. It will be based on the need of the people anyway, right? And then there are financial restraints. So I would ask that recommendation.
Okay, that's, I'm not, you know, I'm not going to fight John that. I mean, I think going up ten grand is not outrageous.
I could ask for more.
Unless you're asking personally, no. So, um, I'm not going, there's, there's no disagreement to that, okay? Other than there are other factors. So the town provides quite a bit of assistance for heating oil in the community. Sue Consol is very good at that. And it.
Quite a big amount of ARPA funds.
ARPA funds, there was a lot of that too. That's true, about a quarter of a million dollars, I think, was allocated to social services. And there was one other thing I was going to, so it's out there, there's no doubt, okay? There, there probably is a, a need. I'm not, you know, we're within ten thousand dollars of each other on a forty five million dollar budget. So I'll leave it to the board. I don't, you know, I think I'm not going to take a position on that one way or another. I really not. It's not worth, it's almost not worth quibbling about.
So one, one aspect, kind of following up on John, is how do people learn about the availability?
Yeah. I think it is a lot of the same folks who come back year after year. I think Norm does include it in the quarterly magazine. I know he does, in fact, included in the quarterly magazine, which is read by, I happen to know, because when people comment on my articles, they're widely read. So I don't know how far people get into that. You know, I don't know if Sue promotes it.
Well, so would that, might I make a motion?
Yeah, I was just going to throw something there. Have we ever tried having the tax collector inserted in the tax bills every July? A little flyer explaining the program or?
No, it may not be. I don't know, we'd have to talk to QDS about it and insert.
When is the period of time that they apply for that?
They, I know that they make their decisions in May, so it would be, it's spring.
So it should be included in the second tax bill.
There is no second tax bill mailed out. There's only one tax bill, yeah.
I think with the ARPA funds, I mean, we, do you remember exactly what we gave from start of oil?
Two forty seven.
Well, two forty seven was the total, but I think oil was like forty five. I mean, that wasn't.
We had another hundred thousand to another agency. That type of thing.
What I would suggest is, I'll, I'll make a motion to this effect, that we approve it, and not only that, for fiscal year twenty twenty four, in the amount of a hundred thousand consistent provisions as listed here. But also, I would say, and we should also look for ways to ensure that our elderly population knows about the program. And I think that it could well be, given the increased need, given the increased awareness, that ten thousand dollars. So that would be my motion.
Well, the issue is, uh, I never liked the way they did it because of the fact that you can only look at income. They're not looking at assets. You could have an eight hundred thousand dollar home and you're going to get the tax break because your income's thirty five thousand. It doesn't make any sense where somebody else has got a house that's worth three hundred thousand and they're struggling. And everything is proportionate based on the number of applicants. So, you know, I think we need to be really careful in this.
I hear you. I wish, I wish we could solve all, all the problems in one program, but we can't. And I think this, this is, that's my motion.
It will be subscribed and, and we can look for that outlet.
Got another question. Is there a stopgap in here where somebody gets money from family services and then somebody gets money for elderly housing? Then somebody gets money for, so one, one family could get money from three or four.
It's possible, yeah. I mean, social security also had its biggest increase in however many years, decades, you know? There's, you know, there's the asset argument, there's a lot of increase, you know, there's a lot of money. We're, we have a, for our town size, we have a robust social services program. There is no doubt about it, uh, which we should be proud of.
And there's the state heat program too, that's out there that they can apply for.
Right, through the state based on income. Exactly, and then they also reduce your electric bill now based on.
So, look, it's the board's decision ultimately. I will say that over now twenty years, it's basically gone from seventy five to ninety. So, you know, we go to a hundred, not the end of the world. It's a fraction in the mill rate. The mill rate, I don't know if anybody's talked to, you know, seen the other side of the budget on the board of ed side. I mean, it's up significantly, so there's pressures this year. There's no, there's pressures every year on the mill rate. It's, you know, it's potentially a mill rate increase that we're not used to seeing, so that's out there.
Let me ask you a question. If we did ninety thousand now and then we have an overabundance of applicants, could we come back and ask for an additional ten thousand or twenty or whatever?
Don't think so, because in the referendum, they have, you know, I read all those things, then it goes to a referendum.
That might be trickier.
Couldn't bring it to the next town meeting?
Well, I don't know when, we don't know when the next town meeting will be after getting to her. I, I don't know when it will be. If we need to have one, we'll have one.
They don't use it, they don't use it. You know, if you put it at a hundred and it doesn't get used, it comes back anywhere.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
I had a further question. Did you have a sunshine thing on that one where it's only for one year, you're saying?
We have to come back, reach here and do it.
Yeah, you have to do it every year.
Okay, unless there's any other, all those in favor of the, of the motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
Two, three?
Let's do hands, because I'm not exactly sure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Are you over here?
And all those opposed?
Over there.
Four, three.
Four, three, what?
Fine.
So you voted in favor.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right.
I wasn't, I was waving it.
All right, let's move on.
Okay, what's next? The treasurer's report.
All right. So we will do our executive summary of the treasurer's report as of December thirty one, twenty twenty two. Fiscal year to date, town has received revenue of thirty three million, four hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and eighty nine, or sixty nine point one percent of the total amount of forty eight million, three hundred and seventy seven thousand, six hundred and ninety eight dollars budgeted. When comparing our performance to last fiscal year, we are one point five percent ahead of this time last year due to interest income outpacing expectations and the town receiving a large fat tax payment from the twenty eighteen through twenty twenty of five hundred and thirty eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty one dollars. Next is the authorized investment section. As of the end of December, the town had twenty nine point nine million in its bank accounts. The investment committee closed the account at Liberty Bank in January. In the last month, the stiff rate has increased to four point thirteen percent and today it is at four point four seven percent. The investment committee on January sixth moved four million dollars into the stiff account. So that would give us eleven point nine, I'm sorry, I didn't get that up on my little sheet, cheat sheet. So I'm doing that in my hands. But we have a lot of money in the stack making nice interest. So as our short-term cash management bond account with Morgan Stanley is achieving a very advantageous rates currently and our strategy is working. And as you can see, we are earning four point three six percent. So as always, the investment committee is reviewing everything and meeting. We are meeting again tomorrow and we will always be receiving our stiff rate from Webster thirty days in arrears. So you'll always see movement on the Webster account. So then we're going to move to the pension plan. As of the end of December, we've received a report from Morgan Stanley, the town's investment manager, about the performance of the two pension plans, Town and Fire. The Town Pension Plan is up two point two oh percent fiscal year to date versus its benchmark of one point seven six percent. Over the three-year horizon, the Town Plan has returned two point nine oh versus its benchmark of two point six four percent. The Fire Department Pension Plan is up two point oh nine fiscal year to date and has returned two point seven five percent over the three-year horizon versus its benchmark of two point six four percent. Overall, the treasurer's responsibility is to oversee all monies belonging to the town. So as of December thirty one, twenty twenty two, total cash balances were twenty nine point nine million, total pension balances were twenty four point five million, for total assets under management, management of fifty four point four million. And questions? So now we'll go to page two of the treasurer's report showing the revenues broken out in more detail. Tax revenues for December was four million, nine hundred and eighty five thousand and eighty one dollars for the month, bringing the fiscal year-to-date total to thirty two million, one hundred and twenty two thousand, four hundred and ninety four, or sixty eight point six percent of the amount budgeted for fiscal. or sixty eight point six percent of the amount budgeted for fiscal year twenty two. In terms of local revenues, town collected a hundred and forty five thousand, one hundred and twenty eight dollars in local revenue with fifty two thousand in interest income in the treasurer's line item. That line item is running far ahead of the budgeted seventy five thousand dollars currently. It is over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of interest income for fiscal year twenty three. We are doing very well. Overall, for the month of November, the town, the December, my title, the town collected five million, one hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and twenty eight in local revenue for sixty nine point one percent of our fiscal year twenty three budget as we continue to collect our property taxes for January. Any questions?
So, um, one of, I don't want to get into the discussion about this right now, but highlight it. One of the decisions that is going to have to be made ultimately, um, on the revenue picture is interest income. Okay? So we've seen interest rates over the last, you know, fifteen years at a fine rally, interest rates have come down, um, over the last six years, making nothing. Uh, we used to budget about a hundred and fifty thousand back in the day. Uh, Bob, I don't think, a couple of things, we budgeted about a hundred and fifty thousand in interest income and we typically made it. Uh, but a couple of things, Bob was probably not as aggressively managing the money. Number one, no slide on Bob there. Number two, we probably didn't, our, our rainy day fund has come up so much over the last eleven years. So those are two factors that now in a more favorable interest rate environment is leading to outsized income in interest. Um, and, you know, that is very likely to continue in the twenty, well, I'm trying to change this, just because you do mortgages, you want interest rates to come down.
Yeah, from now starting in April.
Well, we're talking about it. Well, well, uh, but I don't, like, I don't want to get into it. We're looking at four point three right now, you know, the standard. We can even be way more conservative than that and still have relatively healthy interest income. So that is just for fodder at this point, not for anything else, but it's something that is on the table for fiscal twenty four as a revenue. Okay, let's move on.
Yes, ma'am, treasurer, just to, uh, track what we were, what we heard was the five hundred and eighty nine thousand or so from back taxes. Is that but what represents here, where, where does one find that on this report?
It's not, it's an interest, if you add interest for prior years and, um, past period, that's P P means tax.
Oh, that's not prepaid.
Or prepaid, pass, I think it's past period, maybe, I think that's great. It is past period.
Was it on there?
If you add those three ninety five and one eighty four, I think that adds up to that number. Okay.
Sorry, I thought the P P's did the prepaid, so that would be.
Oh, yeah, I know. We, uh, got it. We, for auditing purposes, have to keep interest and fiscal separate, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
But they were very happy to receive that, those back taxes. There's a lot of happy emails that went around that day.
Is there any other questions? Thank you, treasurer.
Thank you.
Uh, fine news.
Um, I'm gonna be quick, because we have a, a big night here and there's not a lot of stuff going on. Everything is going well. Um, we didn't have any appropriations to report on, um, it's the last board meeting, so I'm going to start on page two. Um, we talked a little bit about the cash flow for a couple of minutes and the things that are happening. As you saw in December, the treasurer's report that we received over five million dollars in income and, um, on average, we have about three, three, four million dollars worth of expenses. So our general fund actually increased, uh, one point eight million in the, um, reserves, I'm going to just jump down to the reserves, uh, minus a hundred fifty thousand, we have the cameras, electricity for the gazebo, uh, the fence staining, et cetera. Um, so that, those funds went directly into the capital fund, so out of reserves into capital funds and also, um, also included in the capital funds, harbor management makes its collections, as does W T C A during those months. So, um, they had other money coming into capital. And then if we move down to non-major funds, ARPA, um, we, we paid out six hundred seventy seven thousand, um, in ARPA. I thought about one point three million was approved, we're still moving money. Um, but in the month of December, six hundred seventy seven thousand went out. Actually, some of it went right back into the non-major funds. That's where we put the social services and the unit family. So we kind of see some coming out and some coming in. Um, so that's why you get minus four hundred thirty seven. So overall, for the month, for the entire town, we increased cash by one point five and, um, obviously we expect January to be a much more significant when we collect taxes. Um, in terms of capital outlay, um, the only thing that changed there was the, um, capital non-recurring, which was redoing five hundred fifty thousand for the camera, et cetera. And, um, in terms of our capital budget, we really spent most of it, uh, five hundred thirty thousand of the six hundred sixty five thousand. We still have six more months to go of the year, um, to finish spending the back, but that's the capital line items that are included in each of the department's budgets. And, and, um, in terms of all of the other line items that are attached to this, there was nothing unusual or outstanding, um, to report on. I had to answer any questions.
Is the pension board shop, the broker that we use, just like we do audits?
Morgan Stanley.
They order.
So we've done RFPs, lots of RFPs in the pension area, um, including Nana. We haven't done one in a while for the money manager services that they provide. However, we did do one for undefined contribution, um, assets under management, and actually Morgan Stanley applied for that, so we were able to kind of take a, a global look at them. Um, and so that might be on the table for us to do at some point in the future, but we're, we're pretty happy with, um, their service and, and when they compare the performance of our portfolio to that of other municipalities in Connecticut, we're usually in the top decile or top quartile. So, um, you know, we're happy.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. And we will move on to, uh, the business, the board, the fiscal year twenty twenty four budget.
So, um, we're going to start with the Department of Public Works budget. And just you have a, a lot of things in front of you tonight. So you have, um, this in the budget for every single department we refer this tonight. Um, also, we have an updated copy of salaries, um, that are included as part of the budget. So there's the detail for that, so we'll, I will refer to those. Um, but before we get going, um, I want to introduce, um, first on the screen, one at the top, Kristi Malave. Uh, she is the Assistant Finance Director. Hi, Kristy, say hello to everyone.
Hi. Nice to meet you all.
You've met Kristy before. She was here last year.
I know she was here, she was on the screen.
She was here on the fair, yeah, yeah. So she's just, she's just participating in all of these budget, uh, stops and then she can. Um, and I don't know if any of you know Bill Claffey, but I want to introduce Bill Claffey.
How are you? Glad to meet you.
So, Bill is our acting, um, Director of Public Works. So he's here to help with the presentation as his call. The three of us are going to do it. I'm going to do the numbers and these gentlemen are going to answer all of your difficult questions. So, um, um, the hard points up there, but let's turn on this to page nine and ten and you can look at the detail of the Department of Public Works, being here. Um, and, um, hey, I didn't remember the salary schedule, but if you go to what would be page five, uh, you can see all of the salaries that we're going to be talking about tonight. So um, that's what we're going to do, a little bit of that information. Hey Larry, I'm hitting that button and it's not Morgan.
Yeah, right arrow on the keyboard.
I'm hitting the right arrow on the keyboard, I'm distracting you. Not this one.
So basically, it's.
Oh, okay, so I think you just have to stand up. Okay, so here, here's our agenda for tonight. Um, the Department of Public Works is two major departments, Public Works and Transportation. We're going to talk about the structure and staffing of the Department of Public Works, their accomplishments, the capital that they're requesting for, uh, next year, and then the conclusion of the budget. So, uh, starting with, uh, structure and staffing, Department of Public Works. Um, we have a nine member team, the Department of Public Works Director, a crew chief, two maintainer threes and five maintainer twos. And I want to point out that, um, in the maintainer, this is for this budget, in the maintainer three, um, that includes a proposed promotion of one of our maintainer twos to a maintainer three. So as we sit today, we have six maintainer twos and one maintainer three, and I'll talk about that, um, in a little, a little bit, how it affects the budget. But, um, there's no other staffing changes that are proposed for the Department of Public Works. On the other side, we have the transportation, um, and it's a five member team, a full time maintainer three, three part time operators, one part time attendant, and there are no staffing changes that you're going to see in this budget for the transportation. And here we look at it, um, just graphically, the Department Director of D P W oversees both D P W, transportation and only the, um, those two areas are all the main names. In the Department of Public Works, all my folks are full time. In the transfer station, the maintainer three is the only full time and all of the transportation operators are part of them. I'm going to start first with the Department of, of, um, Public Works. Um, you know, as I mentioned, they have a nine member team, they have a lot of things that they are responsible for. You have seen this, this, um, slide every single time we have this budget presentation. If you have any questions on any of the, um, duties that Public Works does do, um, Billy, Bill is, um, here to answer those questions. Um, so, um, feel free to ask, but that's what we have the Department of Public Works, yes.
Question, Bill, you're, um, you're mechanic. I know you are one of them. Yep. You have how many, two, three, two? Uh, there's actually three mechanics. One, one that I would only call specify and say, he's our mechanic, you only, we only really pull him out and bring him places when need be. Uh, and pretty much. Are those, well, are those all the maintainer threes? Um, two of them are, oh, excuse me, one of them. Okay. So who, who is the mechanic? So Todd Way would be one of our mechanics and I obviously put my hands into it. Um, the rest of the guys are doing like doing mechanical work, which falls under that maintainer two position.
I have a question, man. Where do we operate the admin assistance from the town hall in this chart?
So Georgie and Mary, um, is the admin and her budget, budgeted dollars for her salary and benefits is one hundred percent in the sliding office.
Yeah, yeah, good point. It's out.
And, and also for the transfer station, do they have admin needs also?
Georgie does both, supports.
They have them, right, right.
Well, they have them, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, they do, and keeps track of waste, uh, tonnage and, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So this, uh, first budget, we're going to take a look at the Department of Public Works by function. And, uh, within this, uh, D P W is made up of four budget line items or four functions. Um, the admin, highway, streets, snow and ice, and vehicle and equipment stations. So when we look at D P W as a whole, the budget totals one million, nine oh one, seven twenty six. It's up eighty nine thousand, seven ninety three or five percent. That's what our proposal is for the Department of Public Work overall. Um, this year, you're going to see a, a few new moving parts here. So the largest budget is D P W admin. That's where we house all the salaries and all of the benefits. Um, and you can see that that budget's up a hundred and eleven thousand or eleven point one percent. Benefits, um, are up. I'm going to explain this a little bit more. You'll see it differently in the next slide, but benefits are up, uh, sixty thousand. Um, and what we did this year is we moved the overtime from snow and ice and highway and streets, and we put it all into the admin budget. Reason why we did that is because, um, our fancy Nova Time system, which has all these codes and things that they can do, when you're driving a truck at six thirty in the morning or seven o'clock in the morning, and then you have to stop and plug out of overtime and into your normal day, it just really wasn't effective.
So Nova Time is our timekeeping system. Um, so when they get called, uh, you know, at three AM, called out at three AM or two AM or all night to plow, and then they come in at seven AM and finish at three thirty, they have to go from overtime to regular time and, um, Nova Time is not capturing it, um.
Efficiently.
Efficiently, it's, it is capturing it. So the answer, let's just move it all over to D P W admin and take it out of these budgets. Um, we'll still be able to track overtime, um, the dates of overtime, that's not an issue. Good question, Bill. Um, everybody, all the commercial trucks, how many, how many are non? How many are non-commercial, so? All require C D L. We have one big truck that doesn't require a C D L, and then we have four Mason dumps that don't require C D L, but those are F four fifties. Have you gone to the E L Ds yet? They're requiring through D O T. I, I have not, no. Okay. Because that would take care of all their problems. It's required that you're supposed to meet the D O T for hours of service because they're C D L drivers, which requires you, basically electronic logging device, they get in the truck, they're in, it shows up, they're behind the wheel, and then when they're out, they punch out, and that would be how you could track it.
Yeah.
And meet both regulations.
Right, right.
Just for what it's working on. If you want, stop looking into that, I have some suggestions of ways, different ways to do it that are really costly either.
Okay, um, so, um, I appreciate that. And, um, in the, from the budget perspective here, um, we're just going to put all overtime now what it totals forty six thousand into the Department of the Admin Department and, um, the other thing that I'm going to talk about when we have our Saturday meeting, I'm going to go into more detail, is defined contributions. Um, so with the people that are in the defined benefit plan, we make the one actuarial determined contribution and we're done, and that's in its own line item. Um, as new folks come on, they're going to be in the defined contribution plan and those expenses are still in each department. So, um, the defined contributions, they have new employees here, and so the defined contributions were up, that increased benefits. So it's going to be, um, you know, I, I'll talk about it more on the Saturday, but for tonight, um, defined contributions increased, uh, this budget. And, um, the highway, um, budget is, is virtually flat up here, but we did raise paving by twenty five thousand, but by taking the twenty thousand and O T, uh, uh, and the, if I can, all that other stuff out, it came out virtually flat. Snow and ice is down twenty nine thousand because that typically had twenty six thousand O T. Nothing else was changed, plus the O T, um, that equals twenty nine thousand and vehicles and equipment, um, up five thousand for field. So overall, up ninety thousand and five, at five percent.
Question.
Yes.
Since we're formulating a budget now, would this be a good time to reconsider whether we want to have a street scan and built into the budget or not?
Certainly the time.
So, um,
Guess we're going to go there.
So Street Scan was a program that was on, everybody, Street Scan is, um, a software company. They come in and they drive all the miles in your road, in your town, and they grade your roads. It has not caught on in Connecticut, that Street Scan. And I, that was a program through C C M. And it had, you know, I talked to C C M recently about it because C C M went through all their programs and they're like, this just never caught on. There is another company that does it. I think they're called Data or something. I could look into that. Um, Street Scan is not the only company. Street Scan is not the only company that does it.
Right, I mean, with Bill taking on these new duties and stuff, whether or not we can still address our roads and things when the time comes.
You know, grading the roads, and that way, when decisions are made to pave, you know, that road has a D, so that road gets priority.
Yeah, so I, I think it could possibly be a good idea, but the problem with that is, you know, you get into the areas that are high tides, I mean, high water. There's, there's really only one solution for that. So we pretty much, we pretty much know what that solution is, and that's raise the roads, but it takes everything else around it to be raised as well.
I only bring it up so you don't get inundated with these new duties that you're working on right now.
Yeah.
That's all. That's it.
I feel like we've got a pretty good plan in play, and we're constantly looking over the road, so.
One of, and not only that, in Cornfield Point, we're doing similar, similar, we're going to do a similar project as to what we did in Nolan, which is when the company, when Connecticut Water comes in and they dig up the road, they only repave half the road. And that is not going to be acceptable, basically in any neighborhood, but if you drive through the Cornfield Point neighborhoods, those roads, I mean, you know, they probably could use it. So a lot of those roads, I don't know if it's the entirety of Cornfield Point that they're.
It, it is, it's going to be done in phases.
Yeah, so we're going to be receiving some of that money and then paving the whole road. So Cornfield Point is going to be allocated some of the paving funds this year.
And I was also going to put the phone call out to Southern Connecticut Gas and see if maybe they want to jump on board with this, because that would increase, I mean, we're planning on fixing the road, so if we can increase their volume, if we can get up the amount of money coming in, that will be a plus.
Well, prime example for the water would be Booken Road, Carl, where we paved it after the water company.
Yeah.
All right. I'm looking at the same budget by category. You can see it a little bit more clearly here, if you take the whole $1.9 million budget, break it down to salaries, benefits, and operations. All salaries are included in the DPW admin budget, so it's basically flat. And the way that we did that is in fiscal '23, we have three maintainers. One of those maintainers is still remaining. One of those maintainers resigned, and one of those maintainers was promoted to crew chief, that's Bill, and who's now acting director. So we had three maintainers. So for fiscal '24, we're only going to have two maintainers, including the promotion. So actually, the difference between the maintainer two and three salaries about $14,000, $15,000. So we're able to save that budget-wise. Also, we have two new employees, and they are starting at lower steps, so those two total about $10,000, because at the low point in the step. So that enabled us to keep our salary level the same as last year. And of course, the overtime, even though it was moved into this budget, it still stayed the same, 46,000 to 46,000. In terms of benefits, you know, they're all contractual, so there's really nothing that we can do about that line item. We had two employees who were single, and now they have family plans, so it is what it is. And also, we had two new employees that are coming on that are going to be in the DC plan, and they're going to be entitled to about $10,000 for the benefits. So now we have three people in the Department of Public Works that are on the DC plan, so that increased the benefit line item. So really, the only thing that this budget has increased year over year that we have control over is the operations line item, and that was increased by $25,000 for the paving and $5,000 for the fuel in the vehicle maintenance. So those are the two main increases of the DPW budget for this year.
You know, on this page is F-422, is that actual?
Is that this? Uh, yes. I think so, let me just check really quick, it should be actual. Yes, it's actual, yeah. Okay, so that's it for DPW. Are there, before we go into the Transfer Station, does anyone want to ask any questions, Bill or Carl?
So I'll just comment, I know we were talking about possibly a new maintainer three, and this board has talked about that in previous years. It's in this year's budget, that would be something that would be advertised. So while a certain employee may be, hey, it would be great if that employee applied, it would be, in theory, open to any of the maintainer twos. However, we want that maintainer three to have a CDL, and not all of them have CDL, so not all these guys have CDL, and we also want a certain skill set. There is a difference between maintainer two and maintainer three. So we'll see how that process goes. It's not guaranteed that one, a certain person will get it, or anybody will get it, but it is in the budget. That's our thing.
One other question. Last, seems to me, it serves me, last year, we increased the paving budget.
We did.
I thought what we were going to try to do is step it up. So is this 25 the next step?
Is it? So we went, I think.
Yeah, so we went.
That was the year last year.
What we did, we did 25 in the budget, on capital not recurring, and then we were going to do 25 this year, and another 25 for capital not recurring. And so that.
Sorry, Carl. Um, last year was 450, this year it's 475. And as you're going to see in a minute, we still have 25,000 in the capital. We'll talk about that in a minute. Okay, so any other questions?
Yeah.
One thing is, could we consider, when you get down to transfer area, would you do that part a lot? Is it paved or, no, it's just gravel and the process? Be nice, I mean, you've done everything else there, and it's locked in at that time.
Hey, Transfer Station, here's a budget overview. By the way, they said typo on the very first line, it says overall budget of 3.3 or 0.9%. That should be 0.3%. This budget is really easy, it's flat, there's nothing exciting going on here. So in total, it's 703,000, it's up just under $3,000 for 0.3. On this page. Here, again, there's two line items for, I should mention, there's two line items of Transport Station, there's the admin, and then there's the waste and disposal. So the salaries and benefits are all in the admin portion of it. And they're up, the salaries are up $7,000, a person that went from 26 to 30 hours, and then the benefits are down 5,000, because there's a 30-hour employee, they have a choice of ACA who costs about that amount, and they had it last year, they don't want it this year. So those two things offset each other. Then, not much movement here, and absolutely no changes in operation are recommended. We're going to stop and see if you have questions.
And hopefully, in fiscal '24, there will be some changes in operations up there, if we can get to scale and get moving on that. So I'm just, for the select, a notice, a bigger 30,000 foot new here. We hope to be going to Inland Wetlands this month with Jeff Jacobson to have a new area for the leave it, take it table, and also a new design for the entire Transfer Station. Instead of going multiple times to Inland Wetlands, or if we have to go to zoning, we wanted to finish the plan and not just go for the leave it, take it table, and then come back for the bigger plan. So I'm hopeful that Jeff has mostly finished up that plan, and then we will submit, get our approvals, and then we can start working on, at the Transfer Station. There is some money set aside for construction, it's not a lot. Probably it's over 100 grand to do some, some of the initial work. I imagine Public Works will be doing some of the site work, but in terms of purchasing a scale, I know, Rick, we've talked about that. There is some money for capital needs if we, if we need them. It's a bigger project, but we at least have some funds to start with. That 100,000 primarily is, when MIRA was still operating normally, they had a lawsuit against them from MDCA, and they had put monies aside in reserves. And that lawsuit ended up going away, and they redistributed the money to all the member towns. We received that money, that might have been right around the time you came, six, seven years ago, and I said, put it in an off-budget account, let's hold on to it, we can always use it for upgrades at the Transfer Station. We didn't spend it as a general revenue, anything like that. So that's good, that we have that money. We also get about $16,000 or $17,000 a year in the NIPS fund, because everybody's drinking the Fireballs, and that's, I don't love that, but it's, they're out there. And we are putting that money in that account also. So there is some money accumulating in that account to do some of the work there.
Have we given any thought for the future of that place being in the open aquifer? It needs a lot of work, ultimately.
So.
For the future.
Well, I mean, our new, our new plan would, everything has to be covered, we test the water all the time. It's not like the state doesn't know it's over an aquifer.
No, I know that, I'm just thinking, you know, from the town's perspective, or the livelihood, and something coming out of, something 30, 40 years ago.
As we know, we had a spill there, well, not a spill, we had a spill 20 years ago, that was recently detected. Thank God, that was not nearly as bad as it could have been. It was about a $20,000 total, which is amazing.
That's cheap.
Amazing. It could have been worse. Talked to Bill recently, he said the numbers on it looked really good, like.
Yeah, the information I'm getting back, the company is telling us the same, even if there's almost not a reading anymore. Out of one of the worst well-tested ones that we did, so.
The only, the only reason why I'm saying that is, you've got land down there at the end of Rome Tree, you know, in the back there, that's got the railroad track, and they don't make any more land, so.
Well, we don't have land.
No, they, but it's available.
Is it?
I think it could be available. You know where I'm calling at, I'm just saying that for the future, should we be thinking about something like that? Because then you get it out of the aquifer, you come out with a different mode of transportation for all your stock to go on rail instead. I mean, you got a lot of different options, and it's a much larger place that's, you know, not in a residential neighborhood as much. I mean, I'm just, I just think that it's something we ought to consider for the near future, and if that property is available, and there might be grants out there, or there might be ways to obtain something.
There's grants out there.
I, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't consider grabbing onto something like that for, if nothing else, for options. You know, granted, someday, who knows, maybe Tilkano will close up. You know, that would be ideal for everything, everything. But that's a pie in the sky, but they have talked about it in the past. So I'm, I'm just thinking, I think we need to look at the bigger picture.
It'd be a good location for a transfer station, obviously.
Right. And it's on the right side of the tracks.
Yeah.
So, for what it's worth, I just think, if it, if it becomes available, I think somebody would be looking at that, considering. That's all.
I have a question. Is it in the operations budget for the Transfer Station that we pay our tipping fees and things out of that area?
Yes.
What's our tonnage?
I'm sorry, what's that?
It's a tiny spot, what's our tonnage for Mike?
It's been up. Everything seems to slow down right now. I don't have it in front of me to tell you the exact, so I don't want to tell you something wrong, but we've, let's see. I wish I could tell you, I just don't have it in front of me.
That's okay, we sprung it on you, Bill.
Yeah.
So, I should close down the tape, excuse me. Do you notice some more stuff that's going on, Doctor?
That's a, that's a hard question to ask with the holidays around, because everything seems to, seems to go up. Obviously, there are more things going in there, but people are also, they're not bringing their, I don't think they're bringing as much in, you know, as they were before, I think they're, everybody keeps coming up to me, asking me about it. So I feel like everybody's holding off, because it's, you know, almost a hobby for people to put something down there, it's nice, you know? Yeah.
Okay. I'm good.
Were you good?
I'm good.
Okay.
I just want to know if it was in there.
It's in there, yeah.
It's been, if you look over, if you look at the actual bulky waste.
H15.
Been very steady. Up and down a little bit. In fact, fiscal '22, we had a surplus in it. You can see that in refuse, in our MSW, that has been consistently going up. In fiscal '22, it's at 200,000, and our budget is 215, so. And, you know.
What is that, because the recyclables going in now?
What page is it?
Recyclable page. Recyclables never matter. We pay one price for tipping. I am hopeful that we will be able to control better the cost of MSW in fiscal '24, either if we are scaled at that point. I think that number will, that number will be sufficient.
Well, it would be for your, so it would be for your C and D.
Say again, Rick, I'm sorry.
It'd be for your C and D, your construction demolition, as opposed to.
Well, it depends, I mean, sometimes people come in with a truckload of MSW.
Okay.
It's not.
Because that's where you can really save on your C and D.
Yes.
Those people with the shingles.
There's a number. No, I, no question about that.
That's right.
But Bill has been.
We are enforcing that pretty strictly. It is getting, it is getting better. We are, we are doing things to get the price down, and not so much turn people away, but I mean, the simple fact about it is, if I take a load of shingles to our Transfer Station versus taking a load of shingles to Calamari's, they're at, you know, Calamari's is at 150 a ton, and we're basically coming in right around 90, if, if, you know what I mean? So there's, there's a big difference. You know, I'm working with the operators up there right now, and to understand what pricing should be, and get a better estimate, as far as it is without a scale. I mean, if a single axle trailer comes in with a ton of shingles, it should be, it should be higher.
Or just send them up to Calamari.
Or just send them to Calamari as well. I mean, if someone wants to pay it, they should pay it. As far as I'm concerned, if it's convenient enough for them to dump it at our place for the same amount, they're going to pay it there, then.
Well, the reality is, as soon as you get your, your scale, they are going to end up paying the same, because.
It's accurate. Exactly. So, but for the current time being, we are, I am working with them to get it up, and I will tell you, I don't have that number in front of me, but I've been watching it, and it is going up. So it has, for the past month, I've seen it go up.
Yeah, Carl, I've looked into this quite a bit, and I can tell you, your low hanging fruit.
Yep.
Is your C and D.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It really is, you just save a lot of money there if you wanted to.
Yep.
So next, are the accomplishments, Bill, did you want to highlight any of these, or they're according to your own pleasure? This is what we worked on by DPW and Transport Station for last year.
Let's see here. So, research, incident, excuse me. Schoolhouse Road, Ingham Hill Road, second half got done of that. New drainage, drainage on Saltair Drive, Elm Street, and Maplewood. We also, let's see here. The work that was done. New paving on Beach Road, Westview and Seville Road, off spray. We've also done work on, those roads also got curbing, tuning pipes crossing the road, replacing the old pipe that was there, two new hedge basins got done. We did a lot of work in there, that road should be great now, it's all pitched.
Uh we did a lot of work in there. That road should be great now. It's all pitched the proper direction. Town Beach had a new handicap ramp. Uh we're gonna be redesigning the parking lot a little bit, making it easier to pull in there and park your cars. I don't know if anybody's been there in the summertime, it's.
Mm-hmm.
Everything's so tight and close together, it's pretty chaotic, so we're gonna be redesigning that, put some line stripes up, cleaning that up.
For the for the parking?
For the parking, yes.
Barely getting part of that.
Yeah, so we we are working at that and and getting.
And bathrooms too, right, I heard?
In the bathroom.
On the lease or something?
Um.
Town Beach?
That hasn't.
I'm looking for the whole thing.
Yeah.
With this form of weather, can you uh take care of uh duties that you wouldn't normally take care of because of the bad weather? So like painting lines, do you paint lines in this type of weather?
You know, I'm holding off on the line striking because that's been top on my list, but I I will say we've had a huge jumpstart on catch basins. Cleaning them out and maintaining them. We've done. A, let's see, to date from January fourth, we've done a hundred thirty one catch basins, something out clean them.
With our equipment?
With our, our draw catch base, yes.
But then next time you come into the town hall, was it take a look at the parking uh? Lines that are in this parking lot now here in the town hall?
Uh I I could take care of that, I I.
Just just to put it on your list if you take a look at it and see what's your opinion, because specifically tonight. It's very difficult to park out here.
Yes, it is. And you know, you run into that situation, okay, do you have, do you have twenty people? Example, do you have twenty people parking a parking lot or do you do you have twenty eight people parking a parking lot, you know, because when you shorten it, everything, you know what I mean? So it's the it's the good with the bad on that as far as that goes.
Thank you.
But I'm I'm sure there's something we can look at and see if we can trim some of the fat down or. Make them a little wider. Uh the warm weather's been great, so we are getting projects done.
In terms of the transfer station and the remodeling of the main building, are the bathrooms up and running?
The bathrooms are currently up and running. There's a new floor in there. It's great. Um. The building is sided, roof uh cut down. Obviously, we've seen the employees that are up at the transfer station now have copies where they can put their. Their jacket and stuff where as before, there was nothing for that. So.
And it's looking better up there too.
Yeah.
We're a little deeper.
Um I wouldn't say publicly, but was it true? Bill has stepped up. Definitely. Um and done a good job. Uh the garage looks awesome, Bill. So thank you.
Okay, so um there's gonna be a capital meeting next Monday, two board of finance members, um Bruce and Brad. You can come in remotely if you want, I can get it on. Um so from DPW, you're gonna see two requests for two dumpsters. For the transfer station, a standard, a heavy duty one, total of twenty thousand five fifty. And then within named projects, we're also gonna do another twenty five thousand dollars for paving budget. That won't necessarily have an effect on the budget because the name projects and the capital not recurring all total three hundred thousand, so. One is up, one is down, um but those two things are gonna be on the list for consideration for the capital meeting.
Your heavy duty, are you gonna make it heavy duty or buy it happy?
Uh buying a heavy duty, well, I'd like to, obviously. Uh the heavy duty would be for C and D. And we were gonna do some modifications in common spots where they break, you know, when you close the door, you have a guide. Locks it in place so the dumpster's not not moving like this all the time. And the light duty was planning on for our precious metals and scrap and whatnot, hauling it around and jobs around dial, having something that's not gonna be. Packed down, hammered with a piece of equipment.
I didn't know if you need the blast off except to.
Yeah.
Because they're building two things for me.
Oh.
Just so you're aware.
Okay, so in conclusion, um DPW budget is up ninety thousand and as I mentioned, uh only thirty thousand is. Um things that we actually added to the budget, the rest is uh to do with salaries and benefits. Um and again, the goal of the department is to really focus on recycling and the infrastructure of the town, and so to that end, we did add twenty five thousand. In the capital budget and um the transfer station budget remains flat. All described, but we'll keep about what we're gonna do with that in future. So that's that's the conclusion. And.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Now for a tough question. Yeah. Can you write his own powerpoint?
I'm sure that Larry can. Personally.
No, you're all set if you want to go.
Thank you very much, ladies. Appreciate it. By the way, Bill, the other thing Bill and I did, uh let's say Tuesday, Friday. We walked Main Street to look at the parking areas that we put the money aside for.
Oh, good.
Yeah, sorry. And Georgianne, Georgianne's gonna get the permit to DOT, so that'll be permitted by the time the asphalt plant's open, blah blah blah. Uh it's not even. That's on, that's a big, they've done a survey, you know. So. We can go past this later.
Go past this one.
Yeah, so. Well, the agenda, I think they all look pretty much the same. Um but it's staffing, the properties. So staffing, structure and staffing changes, well. Uh there's no real staffing changes.
Who isn't?
The structure is pretty flat, one question for the thirty five hours. So over the course of time, I've played around with some of the things that are in here, some stuff has been added, but basically the functions, the ID department's responsible for. Uh I don't know if you can see what's there, basically. Uh you have user accounts, taking care of backup recovery, telephone services, network services, website, end user support. Digital signs. Uh that's the rest of the things that are there. And as as we. I don't have it on this slide, but as we continually say in the town report. No police department, no board of ed, no fire, no life of wealth, some library, but not much library. It basically count all of them, so there aren't any um what we consider to be traditional emergency services. Or for that matter, any um private information that we have to worry about that the school department does. Uh so. Uh next slide. So it's been a while since I've actually been in front of a board of finance. Um at least a few, if not a handful of years. So uh there are a number of things that have gone on over the last five years. You know, there's one laundry list here, there's some things that have been done, a bunch of applications to move the cloud, the accounting system went to the cloud. Uh we launched the uh building permit system in the cloud, both in our mail services went to the cloud. Uh disaster system for um managing their application, they moved to the cloud. Uh the laser feast document manager moved to the cloud. Um the tax collector system moved to technically not really the cloud per se, but to an offsite data center. Uh get to that a little bit more in a bit. Um. We've done done RFPs for printer services, phone services along the way. And coming up this year and looking into next, we're gonna be expanding in the public wifi and attempting to support it all and will be supporting. The network requirements for the various surveillance things are gonna be put in place with the upgraded surveillance. So things have been quite busy. In in terms of things that affect the budget, um. You know, there, a couple of years back, we had the COVID thing. I think everybody remembers. Uh one of the cool things about the COVID thing was we had a lot of opportunity to spend money that wasn't ours. On on services. Uh virtual meetings as an example, setting up conference rooms is another example. Other things that started to show up, things like being able to support remote work and um. That kind of stuff came to us and like many of the capital capital projects, you put those things in place and all of a sudden you're left with expense. And the left with things ongoing. Now, we had to do Zoom and now we live with Zoom. Zoom isn't gonna go away, it it's gonna keep going with us. Another thing that's happened over the past few years is we've had a lot of fun with cyber insurance and liability insurance in the cyberspace. Uh where it used to be, it was included with Kerma as kind of a afterthought rider. Uh now, they have broken it up separately and the vendors. Are looking for very specific technical requirements and things to be in place. Uh things like multi-factor authentication, uh user training, uh. And being able to uh. Have the technology in place to protect the data, which generates more requirements for spending money and doing things than we had before. To even allow ourselves to get get into insurance.
So I'm just just a thirty second introduction. Um. I think up to two years ago, cyber was part of uh the LAP pool pool policy. For a hundred and fifty four towns through Kerma. Um the the interactions with um bad actors out there or uh. Led to claims, you know. And finally. Uh Kerma said no and their person they had doing the as part of the pool said no and they broke it out. And now we, you know, Kerma is acting more as a broker to the cyber carrier. Uh and it's now a budget item of about twenty twenty thousand, twenty two thousand on the town side. And about fourteen, I think, on the board of ed side.
Fifty fifty.
Or fifty fifty, okay. Um and this has some stuff they're requiring now, so. But super important, we all know it, it's not even an issue, it's something that has to happen, has to be done. And Larry's also doing all this testing on all us town employees and I'm a little bit delinquent in my testing, I know that, all right?
You're a cybersecurity.
And and so.
Oh, I got to find.
Yeah, everybody's gonna do their training. So so the um. So to that point, I mean, there are a number of things that come up that that really in. I'm gonna say businesses, towns of our size, uh these begin to be a real challenge. Some of the things that they ask for, you know, it isn't, it isn't like the old days where you can go ahead and put the caffeine antivirus on your. On your computer and you can figure figure it's good. No, you you have to put a whole integrated solution with. XDR, hook the firewalls, talking to the cloud, getting all of the latest information on what the threats are. And a lot of those things are only really available to people of enterprise size, so large business size. Um to actually get uh state of the art type. Services in that area. Uh for example, a a few years back, I was talking to one of the vendors, they would only. Um they would only go to contract with people who would buy two hundred licenses or more. And they were up at the CEN conference. And I was saying, look, you you've got a whole bunch of towns here, if you look around, you know, we've got seventy five licenses. You've got great technology, you've got great hardware, you've got things you could you could use, but you won't let us buy it. And I went in with one of our local. Value added folks, spoke to them about it and they actually ultimately came around to allowing allowing us to buy. The two hundred licenses, but spread it over three years worth of subscription. So seventy five times three goes to the two hundred marks, they went us, went ahead and allowed us to get the enterprise type solution. But uh it's a tough one, it's not easy to get to. Uh other things that have happened, Microsoft. Uh handful of years back, we decommissioned our local exchange server. Um there are hardware costs being being avoided, software costs being avoided. Uh and then ultimately, uh some of the licensing costs that were there. But one of the another portion that comes up with that is it helps us harden our environment because. We don't have all of our devices, all of our phones and things reaching into our network to get our email anymore. So it allows us to harden our exterior because all of our mail devices and things go and talk to Microsoft instead of here. So a lot of times you take a look at the security profile of given businesses. And a lot of the vulnerability has to do with people reaching into the business to get data, whether it's getting email. Whether it's doing e-commerce to the business and reaching in and actually talking to your network. We don't have anything that does that here. Our emails out, all of our services are out. Uh so it all works pretty well. But they um it has moved to a different model. Our ability to buy. Per seat licenses and have it last for any period of time uh is gone. Uh so basically, we had to move from the old per seat license where some of our users were still running Office two thousand. To get up to Office three sixty five and get current. Uh another portion of that is with the way. The changes that are going on with the email systems and protecting against phishing and spam and things like that. The clients are continually changing, the servers are continually changing. And you really need to have a subscription in place to make sure that your software is up to date, otherwise it'll be, it'll get disconnected. Uh we ran into that problem just a couple of years ago, that some of our older mail clients couldn't talk to the mail anymore. And we were really forced to go ahead and do this. At COVID, uh and still feeling it to a degree, the cost of replacing desktop PCs was close to fifty percent. On just a flat hardware basis, equipment that we used to be able to get for a hundred and fifty bucks or five hundred bucks. We're now looking at seven hundred fifty, eight hundred bucks to go ahead and get that piece of equipment, to bring it in the door. Uh it started to drop a little bit, but there was a a huge amount of price rise there. And ultimately, some new things that are coming in. Um we've had the public wifi thing at beaches and parks, which has been going on for a couple of years now. Uh we also got got some momentum with that this year. Plus. Uh with the enhancements that are going to be done to the surveillance capabilities at various locations, they now need internet. There, but doesn't currently exist. So this will be able to put us, be able to put the internet in other places, support the public wifi. And make them accessible to the PD if they need to go ahead and talk to the surveillance. So a bunch of new things are going on. So. Uh next slide. Any questions about any of that?
Mary, is that the same, the public wifi and the, the, whatever we have at some of the public locations? Are they both, is the public can use the same wifi as the players? And is there a security issue with that?
I mean, that's a question too, quickly with a no. There's there's a lot of security issue with that. Um so the the way, so when we take a look at the way. Uh a given site like we set up, so whether we take a look at uh the beaches, the pavilion, or for that matter. Uh the town green, because we're gonna be add adding some stuff there for town green, which is gonna be able to actually get plenty of use out of it. But when you take a look, for example, down at the point. If we're setting up to be able to support. Hundred and fifty potential users connecting via public wifi now, and this isn't. Hundred and fifty people sitting down and streaming high def movies, high def movies on those. You know, that that's not what's being funded here, because when you take a look at the connectivity that's being involved, we're only really talking about a half a gig. Half a gig service supporting a hundred and fifty people, so you're talking maybe about four megabits. Availability per person in the situation where things are really busy, which is enough to get them mail delivered, get text delivered. Um take care of a lot of types of services you want to be able to have. Uh potentially phone calls over IP, but not those streaming types of services. And when you put the capabilities in place, you carve out a portion of it to ensure that you've got. Well, first of all, you segment it so the traffic's not talking on the same networks. Second of all, you do see quality of service things, you make sure that your important things, like the surveillance is available. And in situations where you're reaching out to that, the surveillance would have higher priority and would degrade the service and the other things anyway. So they would just go ahead and steal the bandwidth if it's necessary to go ahead and get done. And for. It's one of the things to that point, you know, a lot of people think, well, if we go down there, we install. A half dozen cameras are on the involved. How the heck is that gonna download all that video in real time to the police department? The answer is, well, it's not. Because in each one of these locations, it will be nodes where. There are local surveillance servers collecting the data, getting the data, so it's all being kept at those sites. And if something happens and the PD needs to see it, they can connect to it and look at it. And then stream that in real time, but you're not streaming all of that stuff constantly over the net. So it's really not an asking basis. Any other question there? Okay. So.
Will that be a first step?
What will be what?
Will that be first step?
No, it's gonna come down. Yeah, it's it's gonna be uh, hardwired to the locations. So, um. Salary is up three percent, got a little bit two point five, which is consistent with what's going on with the town. Uh, the big item here is the operation jumps by twenty-seven percent. But we can talk about this, you know, aside from the last ten minutes, we'll talk about it a little bit more when we get to the next slide. Uh, total budget looking at a close to an eighteen percent jump. So, we go to the next slide before anybody gets to ask too many questions about that. Um, now, but this one, so I, this slide here. Uh, I don't know if you can see the green and the blue from your angle on the left-hand side. So this one goes over back over the last ten years of the non-personnel side of the IT budget. Uh, including, uh, when we go back and take a look at the stuff that's in a green. That was before the deposit system and the old finance system, but the numbers are basically the same. Uh, the items that were in blue were things that were in. Uh, other accounts, town hall accounts and things which came over to the IT budget in the sense of deploying and managing it. Now, if you take a look at this over the course of time. Back in twenty fifteen, a hundred and thirty-five thousand bucks was being spent on IT operations. You come to budget, excuse me, budgeted for IT operations. Uh, you come to F Y twenty twenty-two. Uh, the the number is actually down to, uh, what, twenty twenty-three? It's actually down to a hundred and twenty-one thousand. That there has actually been a reduction in that of close to ten percent. From where that originally started. And there are things over the course of the years that you can see. For example, the rental of computer equipment from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. That was a result, that drop was a result of. Uh, going to RFP for the copy of contracts and the leases and things. Uh, and not only did we have a drop in the cost of the leases. But a- as you can see, additionally, uh, there was a drop in the cost of the overall maintenance. Um, these types of things, when we take a look at the next slide, were things that we were able, I was able to turn around. And reinvest into next generation cybersecurity. And get it to come out as sort of a wash, because they were able to save some money someplace and then spend some money. Uh, somewhere else that you get to go and budget them from. Then over the course of time, and if some. They kind of run the course, being able to uh, come out the sponge as far as that's concerned. Then, so if we, before we get to the last column of this, let's jump to the next slide. So this next slide, it shows a bit of a cascade of things that have been happening to the IT budget. And increases and things that have been required over the course of time. Now, when this all started out, you know, back in the mid-teens. We were looking at nothing but the website and G I S and around seventy-five hundred bucks. Then things start to come in, uh. Having our mail services moved outside, avoiding the cost of the mail service. We, between the services and licensing for exchange and things like that, we would have had to purchase. We avoided potentially twenty-five thousand dollars worth of capital cost to replace our exchange server by going to the subscription model. And the subscription model, you know, started out the first year at twenty-five hundred, went to thirty-three because that was the cost for a whole year. But going to that subscription model. Uh, the first year, the firewall actually included hardware, but the security and things required to support. Uh, the firewall, the subscriptions and the endpoints are, jump in here, are close to five thousand dollars a year for the security. Uh, I mentioned the X D R replacing the McAfee to get the enterprise-type hardening on our desktops. It turns into a once every three-year cost instead of a once every two. So when that was originally initiated in twenty twenty, it was thirty-six hundred for three years. Uh, this last year, it jumped up to thirty-nine. When you take a look at the the line above that, the Office six, three sixty-five and the exchange. A couple of things happened there. Uh, we did increase our universe of people that were, we were providing clients for. Uh, for example, you know, public works, transfer station. And and a number of the union folks who were not resident in town hall, did not have accounts. By union contract, were required to have email accounts now, so we had to subscribe them. And in addition, there were some, in particular, the police commission. Uh, ended up getting town email addresses and town mail space at at a tier which, um. Not at a base level tier, but a slightly raised level tier. To allow for uh, full regulatory compliance and and discovery, legal discovery capability necessary to go ahead and support that. If something got a little bit funky, um, and the Microsoft cost jumped. By about ten percent or so along the way while they were doing that, so we see the the jump in the Microsoft. Twenty twenty, we started with the building permit system, uh, which, uh, we absorbed as part of the the building. Uh, section, um, Q D S. This Q D S for managed hosting here is actually the tax collector system and system supporting W P C A and the tester. Uh, the first year, the twenty twenty-one was, uh, basically it came online in February, so it was a partial year. But basically what we've got here now is it between. U D S and the assessor system moving offsite, we were able to decommission two application servers. And what we've now got up in the cloud, with no of us. Is a actual live alternate data center, which is supporting our tax collector application. So they could run completely separate town hall at levered level, they could still collect taxes. Amen. And uh, not only that, but all of our. Uh, user accounts and and um, are. Uh, that type of infrastructure is also replicated posted there. So instead of having to spin that up and take days to do that, if something, if we had some sort of calamity here. We could actually just go ahead and start operating it where it's necessary. Uh, and that hit, that seventy-six hundred, um. On one of the other slides, you see there was a reduction in the actual. Uh, um, standing capital hardware replacement account was deducted by the seventy-six hundred. Uh, to go ahead and support this. So the capital replenishment, uh, thank you. You can see this twenty-one and twenty-two on this slide, dropped from twenty-five to thirteen-five. To support this and a couple of the things that are going on to enable that data center. Um, let's see. Laser page zoom, yeah, you now own zoom. Uh, fifty-four hundred is kind of back when we first implemented it in terms of the capabilities and the things that we needed. We've been able to trim it down, get the licenses right size, and drop it down around thirty-seven hundred. But uh, that still leaves us with from twenty seventeen to here. Uh, you you look at around forty-two K worth of growth. That is, uh, you know, for the most part, looking at it, uh, is ar- is arguably not. In any way, shape or form discretionary. It it just, it it's the cost of doing business these days and what happened there. Uh, the next one down, some of the other items that that are there. The copy of leases, you can see the reduction in the copy of leases, you can see the reduction in the maintenance. Uh, the telephone, uh, telephone communication services for town hall. Uh, they were in, would be reduced to twenty twenty-one by that five to six K, which is actually. The system has been in place long enough that the leases on the phones. Uh, matured, so that we're not paying the leases on the phones anymore. So they're here free, we're not having to pay a per station cost on those, so that drops that there. So there are some costs that are coming down. Uh, are there any questions on any of that?
Are you going back to the previous page?
Sure, which one? It's a non-personal, yeah, so.
Looking at the other technical services and communications, just identifying why, why those increases are there.
Okay, so we'll we'll start with the communications. Primarily the jumps in the communications here, first of all, uh, fifty-seven hundred of that. Is related to uh, money that's being pulled from parks and recreation. For where they were funding telecommunications and network services for their parks. So they had actually funded that amount of money to support mini golf, the pavilion, town beach, Harvey's Beach. To have phone and network for a partial year. So that was in their budget. That that is being pulled across here, so that fifty-seven, although the fifty-five, seven sixty is there. In terms of an increase previous year over budget that we had within the department, um. It's up to fifty, so it's an increase of seven. So that is to not only get us to going, uh, twelve months. Instead of seasonally, the way park wreck would, to be able to go ahead and support all of the surveillance activity. Plus, it's expanding at the Cavernar Park in Town Green, because it's been requested. You know, a lot have been wifi access in Town Green, especially in situations where there are things like the. Um, art and craft festival and things that come in, to be able to support that and merchants and things out there. Uh, plus, uh, the one at Town Green, uh, you know, as you would, putting a hundred and fifty people at Town Green. You don't really need to do that every day. That that kind of shows up in bunches. But because that service will actually be coming into the building here, what that'll enable us to do. Is go ahead and also serve the park and rec center. Park and Rec Center is currently being served. Everybody who's getting services out of there. And and actually, the public wifi in this building in them is all being served off of a twenty-five megabit. Broadband connection is left over by emergency management, okay? So sometimes when you come in here and you wonder why the wifi is slow, that that that's why that's the case. So one of the things that we'll be able to do with the expansion of this and having it out in Town Green is. That capacity will be able to be in the buildings and in park and rec for all the time that the town green is not busy. And plus, since it's in our data center. It'll allow us to have a big backup for our current Connecticut State fiber gigabit connection. So if anything happens and the fiber goes down, we can automatically switch over to that and have that as a service in place now. Where right now, our only backup is twenty-five megabits, whi- which is very good. Fortunately, the fiber never goes down. But if it were, things would be a little bit slow here for a while while they bring that back online. And that'll provide redundancy for here that we didn't have before.
So is this for contracted services effectively?
That is effectively contracted services, yeah.
And do we, and you know that that's the number or that that's this?
We know that, we we, we know that that's the number. I'll go out on a limb and say that. So so we've got contracted services in place, the contracts have been written up and signed for all of the. Uh, public wifi network that's going to be in place as part of this, because it should be all placed by the spring, so it'll be there, so those contracts are all settled. Uh, the the growth of the technical services that you see there relates to the things that you saw on the other slide. Basically, everything that was above the break on that slide falls into technical services. Um, and 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 that's where that goes. Yes.
Question Larry, at one time, Park and Rec, I believe, had their own website, web service. Do you know if there's, they're still running in their own web service and why hasn't been incorporated into their town services?
So, yes, they still use their own website, they they still use their own website. Uh, they use a web service which is specifically designed for uh, parks and recreation agencies. That is set up to handle registration for classes, management of things like the pavilion and things of that nature. Um, people sign up, you, uh. They've got memberships on the Park and Rec website, so you can go ahead and work with those services and see those types of items. It's really an e-commerce site as opposed to an email, as opposed to a management site. And and the town which sites, it's 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 a. Providing information site where they're really e-commerce site, and it's still separate.
And and our security services that we were just talking about also covers the Park and Rec?
So are, they are, so their their services, like our web services, are external to us. So the the none of the activity coming in for registering for classes or doing that comes into our network at all. It it's talking to somebody out on the web, so all of that's handled out on the web, it's not coming in here.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions? Well, I guess, we've been here, with this one. So, I I think a lot of what I talked about here, you know, there are a number of other side things here, COVID. Insurance, changes in licensing and the way the business models for things like office and productivity tools and and email work. Uh, that has forced our hand in this, that you've seen in the in the in the picture with the way that things have exploded and grown. Um, the ability to go ahead and squeeze things out of contracts. You know, take, you know, we're gonna save any cost above these. Prophetic fleet, prophetic maintenance, doing things with help communication, really only the things that we've got. That are big ticket items and we're going out there that we're spending money on, uh, oh, you've done. And and over the ten year period. You know, I'll go back to this one, o- o- over the ten years, one point one percent annual, it it isn't too bad. So, uh, in terms of, you know, getting a correction and getting things kind of right somehow. Uh, I think COVID kind of birthed that home and the other things is causing causing for birth. Um, and then it's just time to approach it and and you deal with it.
Good job, Larry.
Are there any other questions? That, okay, thank you. We will move on to comments from board. Anybody have any comments?
I think everything I just said, I like the reports, thank you.
Any comments from the public? Okay, then I'll then you pay the motion to adjourn. All in favor?